How you doing? Good to see you. Going in for chief?
No, no. He's going in for me today.
Oh.
We were leaving Home Depot a couple of days ago and we were leaving. You were walking with Randy.
Okay.
All right. The time is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. And first of all, apologies, my voice is a little bit altered because I've been getting over a cold, but I'll do my best to speak clearly. We're going to begin with public comments. So at this time, if anybody wishes to address council, please step up to the podium and state your name and speak your comments in up to four minutes. Go ahead and step to the podium.
I'm not that technical. I just learned how to use these. Thank you. My name is Jack Morris. I live at 1048 Sunflower Trail. I'm sure everybody knows me. First off, in front of the whole community, I am not Daniel Horrigan. I've been falsely accused of yelling at neighbors behind City Hall. I couldn't even walk. I'm a baby diabetic junior now and a little bit they're investigating me. I'm getting a heart monitor from Veteran Affairs. I can't walk all over the valley like I used to. Second, I don't know why they thought it was me, but the last people I'm going to yell at is cops. That's just asking for trouble. That aside, Mark Mayor Bruner, he's done an excellent job as well as y'all have. Thumbs up on the ponders. They said it couldn't be done. And how hard was it to get a pool? I mean, really, the meadows are flowing with pools, big pools. Let's talk infrastructure, Mayor Bruner. All around Sunflower Trail, we don't even need to contract that out. We've got Public Works and their army. Cracks on the city side, you know, because I know y'all own property up to a certain extent and they're getting larger and larger. Now, I want to learn, since I'm learning cement due to Marshall Burns, Public Works, I want to do it myself. I've been watching videos. That doesn't make me a pro, though. But yeah, they're going to get bigger and bigger and also sidewalks for, I know that can't be helped because this place was piss poor built. Other than that, I'm just saying thumbs up. Chief's done a great job. Mayor Bruner doesn't have any financial shenanigans to deal with. I remember, I know the history of the history and Marshall Burns taught me cement. He cares. But anyway, I wanted to say thumbs up. Oh, if I were you mayor and council, we used to send out flyers to the residents before we made a decision. And I know we have some upcoming projects. Now, on the uplands issue, we were this close to having a pool. And one of the committee members told me why way back when we couldn't do it. The price of cement skyrocketed just like copper because China was getting its game on. Cement went way up there. I don't know what it is now. I know I pay for it. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for letting me have my voice and you'll probably see me more often. I see you and your wife driving by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Helen Bessie, 795 Oakdale, and totally unprepared for what I'm going to say, except that swimming pools, I don't know what he's talking about, but if we were considered as swimming pools, I recall the insurance liability, the liability was really high, the insurance is incredibly high, the upkeep, the having to maintain it, having to have staff there. I think that was one of the reasons we decided not to have a swimming pool, but other than that, I don't know anything about it. I'm here to speak about the applicant who was wanting to build in the water, critical water quality zone. I have no comments on that either, but I did, I think I did write to all of you and Rudy responded that I don't know where that structure is in your floodplain maps, but that's more my concern. I mean, just based on the floods that we just had, when you put a structure in a floodplain, especially if it's getting close to the waterway, you're just putting a big blockade there that, one, it's going to damage the structure when a flood comes through. But for me, as importantly, is if I live upstream and somebody has a structure in the floodplain, then that water backs up because the structure is there holding it there. It backs up. This is what happened in Sunset Valley in, okay, I couldn't remember the dates, 2013? Yeah, we were the epicenter of a storm that just went called Whack right on top of Sunset Valley, and we had terrible flooding. And I remember the floodwaters came up into my yard, at least probably 75 yards. And so I wouldn't want to be blocking that space and having the floodwaters back up even more to my neighbors, which in my situation wouldn't happen, but I'm just using that for an example. Also, there was another incident where Katie Phillips was here. I wanted to, I have a small storage building. I wanted to add two feet to it. And I sit in my plans, and if you looked at the structure on a floodplain map, then it was just right on the edge of the Hundred Year Floodplain. And Katie said, no, I couldn't build there without an engineer's report. And I didn't want to pay the money for an engineer's report, so she worked with me and we ended up hanging in my little storage area outside of it. But the, but so it's the structure here and it hangs like that, and then all this is spaced to the ground, so I wasn't infringing upon the floodplain. Now, back then, they seemed to really care about things like that, and I don't, I just don't know where this is, the floodplain. So if you know it's not going to hurt anybody downstream, I mean them or upstream, then cool, I'll get out of your way. Thanks.
Thank you. If anyone else wishes to speak at this time, please step up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. So just like to highlight some items. So the mayor and I hope to file the mayor's budget this Friday, August 8th. We have until August 12th, but we're hoping to get it filed by Friday. And so that will be, of course, the budget will be part of our next three council meetings with the adoption scheduled for, hopefully, we can get it adopted by the second meeting in September, which is September 16th. The FY23 audit, we're trying to catch up so we can get on schedule for our audits with our new, new firm. The final field work has been completed. We are in sample testing right now, and when the finance manager returns from vacation, we're hoping, hoping we can wrap everything up by the end of August so that we can hopefully present to the Budget and Finance Committee first at their September meeting and then ultimately to council. So that is our, that is our goal for the 23 audit. Just a reminder, the November, the upcoming November 2025 election with three council seats, the candidate filing deadline is Monday, August 18th, I believe, at 5:00 PM. Yeah, and so there will be information in the newsletter that gets published, I believe, I don't, I think the newsletter is going to be published after we, we publish the, the budget, so next week, and we'll send out another gov delivery notice as well. We have also, we'll be sending out information this week that we're opening up committee applications and arts commission applications for the next fiscal year. The applications will be due by September 8th, so you can tell your committee members or any other residents that may be interested to get those applications in. And appointments will be made by you all, council, on September 16th. Upcoming events, the Sunset Valley Arts Commission is having another World Art and Culture Evening, and this one is the Taste of the Mediterranean, and that will be Saturday, August 23rd. I believe it starts at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. And one final note, so Leona, the 6405 Brody Lane Botanical Garden in Edenry, they have made a lot of progress. We don't have an opening date yet, but I wanted to report to council that they did pay for half of the water line as was required by the assessment. So they sent us, it was a $161,000 check that they dropped off a few weeks ago, which paid for half of not only the contract worth by, by Smith, but the engineering fees and City of Austin fees as well. So grateful that that water line is complete and operational. So that's all I have for my report.
Council, are there any questions for the city administrator? Councilor Johnson?
So we had met earlier before you were, so I talked about gas rates and how we're not going to do anything, or that's, you want to just give any information? Our gas bill for July was like $50, which seems excessive considering it was July. And, well, you know, hot water heater, I guess, we have a gas one, but it's that, it was like a little extreme. So can you just touch on it for like two minutes, 90 seconds?
Certainly. So the city has in the past participated in sort of the, there's both the rate protest and then there's the rate, I forgot the other term, there's rate protest and rate, like delay, I guess. And there's a law firm, I believe they're based here in town, the Thomas Pricato, Pricato Law Firm, that lets cities know, you know, if you would like to participate, you, you basically take these resolutions, they're approved by council. You know, I just haven't seen any follow-up or really success for that. So they did send one to both the city secretary and I. It was a really tight turnaround, so I, I elected not to, to take that to council. So I don't know, Darren or Barbara, you have any else, anything else you want to follow up, or, but maybe we can look into it. Do you have, can you pass them a mic?
My understanding of the process is that you're grouped in with several other cities in the, in the rate protest, so it's a huge process, but I can follow up with Tom, with Tom Pricato and just get an update for you if you'd like me to.
Is that a good use of, is that a good use of your time?
It won't take that much time.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to highlight a few things from the Public Works report. We have the summer youth program for the, what we call our teens has ended for the summer. They've done a great job from removing a lot of mesquite to the last project, I think, would have been the final section of the Savannah Trail that connects the Homestead Recreational Venue to the Savannah Trail. So that has all been completed in the last few weeks. There they are, standing some benches and doing some work. We've got one of our teen program alum here, here this summer with us. So we've been, they've been hard at work doing that, so they'll see a lot of projects around town that they can take some pride in and know that they helped to support their city and help to make things better for residents and visitors in Sunset Valley. As I mentioned, the Savannah Trail connection was finished, the Brody Lane Mill and Overlay Project was done, a good portion of the city facilities expansion for the Public Works covered parking and covered work area is completed. We also had an Eagle Scout come in and build the benches for the backyard project, so those went in this weekend as well. So that's all been going on. To follow up on a project that we had finished up, talked about a while back, I do have the quote and the numbers for putting the, like putting a double side, a double sign on the street signs, that's going to be about $6,000. We don't actually need council approval for that amount of money, so we'll probably be going ahead and ordering those signs. We're waiting to get back the pricing for replacing the signs on the light poles as well to make those, see if we can make those match with all the other signs in the city on, on that. And I believe that is it, unless there's any questions for anything that's in the report.
So council, based on previous discussions with the quotes, my plan is to proceed with authorizing the purchase of those and having them get installed. These would be the, the backside facing, but now would be a good time to provide any additional feedback if we do want to bring that back as an agenda item for council review prior to going forward with any kind of purchase. But it does fall within my ability to, to approve. Councilor Rosenberg?
Carolyn, you mentioned that you wanted to make sure that it matched some street signs?
No, we're also good, trying to get a quote for the signs that are on the actual, like traffic poles, the green signs that are on there, seeing if we can make signs that match our signs and replace those, to make them all together. That's separate from the, the actual, like, poles that are at the street corners.
Got it. And there was something about Ernest Robles was different than the others, corner of Ernest Robles and Brody, remember? I don't have my pictures current.
So we're going to take that sign down because it should just be on the traffic poles. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Works, Public Works report? Moving on to public safety.
Good evening. Since our last meeting, the police department's really just been doing a little house cleaning and working on some, some of our procedures and policies. I mentioned at the last meeting that we were working on making our, the website for our city camera system, the flock cameras more transparent. We're still working on that. We're, we're going to end up with a even more transparent model than like model policy for that. We're working on what our report will contain and we want to also show what we do with our cameras, like the results of our investigation. So you can, that's coming, that's going to be on the website. And we've also reviewed some of our other just routine policies, for example, our alarm permit policy. Currently, we, if we get a false alarm call or something like that, officers come out, they write a citation, it can be a warning citation for, for you not having an alarm permit. Well, in Sunset Valley, alarm permits are free, so instead of coming out with a citation, why don't we just come out with the alarm permit application and have them fill out the application right there on site? It generates a lot less bad blood and it's something that we can do in the same amount of time as writing a warning ticket. And it's just something we never thought about, but as we're starting to review some of the things that we do, that, that came up, one of the officers brought that up, and it's a really good idea. There's some others, but we're going to be, that's what we're doing for the next two weeks while we prepare for school to start on August 19th.
Any questions for Public Safety? Councilor Burrell?
I have a question. Thank you for the report, Chief Carter. I have a question about the flock cameras. You know, it was reported in the materials we received that in some communities, there's been concerns or pushback or protest or discontent about the flock cameras in terms of privacy. Outside of the standing committees, within These would be the, the backside facing, but now would be a good time to provide any additional feedback if we do want to bring that back as an agenda item for council review prior to going forward with any kind of purchase, but it does follow up within my ability to, to approve. Counselor Rosengard.
Carolyn, you mentioned that you wanted to make sure that it matched some street signs?
No, we're also good, trying to get a quote for the signs that are on the actual, like, traffic poles, the green signs that are on there, seeing if we can make signs that match our signs and replace those, to make them all together. That's separate from the, the actual, like, poles that are at the street corners.
Got it, and there was something about Ernest Robles was different than the others, corner of Ernest Robles and Brody, remember? I don't have my pictures current.
So we're going to take that sign down because it should just be on the traffic poles.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Public Works, Public Works report? Moving on to public safety.
Good evening. Since our last meeting, the police department's really just been doing a little house cleaning and working on some, some of our procedures and policies. I mentioned at the last meeting that we were working on making our, the website for our city camera system, the flock cameras more transparent. We're still working on that, we're, we're going to end up with a even more transparent model than like model policy for that. We're working on what our report will contain, and we want to also show what we do with our cameras, like the results of our investigation, so you can, that's coming, that's going to be on the website. And we've also reviewed some of our other just routine policies, for example, our alarm permit policy. Currently, we, if we get a false alarm call or something like that, officers come out, they write a citation, it can be a warning citation for, for you not having an alarm permit. Well, in Sunset Valley, alarm permits are free, so instead of coming out with a citation, why don't we just come out with the alarm permit application and have them fill out the application right there on site? It generates a lot less bad blood, and it's something that we can do in the same amount of time as writing a warning ticket, and it's just something we never thought about, but as we're starting to review some of the things that we do, that, that came up, one of the officers brought that up, and it's a really good idea. There's some others, but we're going to be, that's what we're doing for the next two weeks while we prepare for school to start on August nineteenth.
Any questions for Public Safety? Counselor Burrell.
I have a question, thank you for the report, Chief Carter. I have a question about the flock cameras, you know, it was reported in the materials we received that in some communities, there's been concerns or pushback or protest or discontent about the flock cameras in terms of privacy. Outside of the standing committees within Sunset Valley, are you aware of any concerns that have been raised by residents within the city?
No, there's no concerns from residents. There's members on the standing committee that have concerns about the cameras, more so about making sure that we're transparent and that some of the things that have happened in other cities don't happen here.
Chief, I noticed this weekend that T J Maxx has their own security guard. Is there something going on in the city we need to know about?
No, more of the stores that traditionally didn't have security are starting, it's more, starting to have it, it's more because of what's happened in other locations. I think some of the regional managers are, have started to put, they share security with other stores in the region, but I think more are starting to come down our way, not because of incidents, it's just nationally, there's been a lot more of these organized, like where mass thefts are occurring, not the usual shoplifting, but where people come in and just grab a whole rack of things, so I noticed that more, more of the stores are starting to have their own security in-house.
Well, we appreciate our officers, and we understand you can't be everywhere in twenty, you know, twenty-four seven, so, but I noticed that and just wanted to see if there was something going on. Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Safety? All right, thank you, staff. Moving on to agenda item number four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Counselor Rosengard.
I move to approve on consent, agenda item number five, which is the minutes of July fifteenth.
Right, council, does anybody want to pull that item for discussion? Is there a second for the motion?
A second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent, the approval of the minutes from the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, and we'll go on to agenda number six now. Consider act on approval of a professional services agreement with Embrace H R and approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, and this will be budget number, number ten, and I'll hand this over to the city administrator for introduction to this item.
Thank you, mayor. So council, this is a follow-up item to the action that was taken at the July fifteenth meeting, our last meeting where Embrace H R was selected as the H R management consultant. This is essentially just approval of the professional services agreement and approval of a budget amendment for this current fiscal year for the, for August and September services. And just as a reminder, it's an under fifty thousand dollar, or, the, the contract has to be under fifty thousand dollars. Again, we did not go through the formal R F P process, so we have a placeholder in the FY, upcoming FY twenty-six budget for twenty-five thousand dollars, and then the remaining amount would be in FY twenty-seven, and then the contract and the project concludes with the update of the H R policy manual, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Rosengard.
The reason I didn't put it on consent was if I had a question, I'm sure the other council had a question, because when we're doing budget, the last meeting we had is we agreed to two thousand eighty-three dollars a month payout for two years, and so I was like, wait a minute, we're doing forty-five hundred this year, we're doing twenty-five thousand next year, yes, and then I was reminded, then that leaves a balance of about twenty thousand five hundred in twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven. Thank you. With that, I move that we approve.
Is there a second for the motion to approve?
Second.
Mayor Porton? All right, any further discussion before we go to vote? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, so we approved a professional services agreement with Embrace H R and approval of an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. Right, council, we're going to move on to agenda number seven. Consider an act on approval of a proposal from Art Scene Alliance for artistic metal arches and entries to the Sunset Valley Savannah Trail, and this will be also the city administrator, or is this going to be fellow works?
So as I mentioned earlier, the construction of the Savannah Trail has basically been completed, and we have a grand opening scheduled for September. One of the things in looking at the trail is idea of, you know, placemaking and public art, and so we've come up with like three nature-inspired arches that would be at the entries along Ernest Robles Way and over by the Homestead Recreational Venue to kind of give a, you know, distinctive nature, distinctive look to the trail and help people to kind of recognize it and kind of just give a, a sense of place. And the trails are basically kind of inspired by the nature that's there, the, having the, the grasses and the flowers at the base and some tree, tree branches and things at the top, and taking this and discussing this with the Sunset Valley Arts Commission, they wanted to incorporate some words such as peace and nature and enjoy, there's some other words we added in there just to add a little bit more, kind of just, you know, something to have people, for people to reflect on, and the possibility of adding some limestone blocks in the area. These would be corten steel, laser cut corten steel arches that are welded together that would go over these entrances, ten feet, a minimum of ten feet wide to encompass the entire trail, as well as about two feet in width going down the trail. So we did, Art Scene Alliance put together a quote for us on the installation of these and the cost of these arches, and I believe it is, oops, sorry, sixty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty for the, the installation and, of the art pieces there on the trail, and so I'd like to, yeah, hear what people think, if there's any other, you know, feedback or ideas.
Thank you. I did have a question, just in terms of what was our budget that we set aside within the project for arts?
Hundred and twenty thousand. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was part of this, that sweep of FY twenty-three, I believe, so I, I can look up the, I think it's around a little over a hundred and twenty thousand. So there's also another project, separate from this project, that is engaging with a local artist, Tammy West, to, for some environmental art.
Yeah, we're doing, we're going to be doing that in October, there'll be an environmental planting with some native grasses going down the creek to create this kind of riverine effect in environmental art, as well as a solitary bee habitat that will be another artistic piece that's on the property there. And actually, those are, those are actually closer to the Brody end of the project, so.
Counselor Rosengard.
First off, is there a difference in price from the two foot wide versus the one foot wide construction of these arches?
They should be the two foot wide, I, they, let me double check. Because in, the, the picture they show is a two foot wide.
And that includes the work of the arches, not just the install?
No, it's, it's the arches themselves, that's, it's the arches, yeah, it should be all of that, so that's about fifty-nine, the install is sixty-four hundred?
Sixty-four.
Apparently, I need new glasses.
Personally, the wider ones are going to do a better job of showing the detail of the artwork, and the, of course, taller, it goes from ten feet to twelve feet, no.
So, yeah, the ones that are, the fabrication says twelve foot wa, width by thirteen feet height and a two foot depth.
So are, the sidewalk is ten feet wide?
Right.
So if you go to twelve feet, is there something we're getting into?
No, it should be on the outside edges of that, it should, it'd be basically one foot on each side of the sidewalk.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so definitely, I, I would agree, the twelve foot with the two foot columns.
Yeah.
And then the height being twelve feet, I think that would look so much nicer.
It'll, it'll look really nice.
Yeah, and gives more art, chance for bigger detail.
And also more places where people can stand against it and take pictures.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm grateful to the Arts Commission for having good taste. I was worried what this arch is going to look like, and I was hoping it wasn't going to be like McDonald's arches, just joking, but, so I'm glad they have.
Have really good taste.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the proposal from Art Scene Alliance for artistic metal arches at the entries to the Sunset Valley Savannah Trail.
Is the motion to approve, is there a second? Counselor Burrell, seconds? Any further discussion? Counselor Johnson.
What is it, what is the totals on the Savannah project at this point?
What we spent this year has been, and we're still within budget, is one point two eight million, and we still have two hundred and ninety-two thousand budget remaining.
That's wild, that is, if, in the beginning, it was, oh, it's going to be one point two million, I'd be like, leave it, it is a shocking amount of money, and like, I don't want to rob us from any more art in the city because I love that, but it's just like, anyway, that's it.
Any further discussion?
Oh, we're just trying to figure out, that was this year, right, but we started this project.
Yeah, there, there's been more, but that is the actual construction of the project, so then there were also the fee, there were also the design fees, and then early on, like the, the, they were much smaller, but the fees, yeah, to assess and, you know, the surveys and whatnot, but yeah, but the actual construction, the, the Smith contract portion, one point two.
For upper Cougar Creek.
Correct.
I remember when, like, or something, I'm like, okay, yeah, you can, but like, that's, yeah.
Further discussion or questions for staff? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion's approved. And then the other question I have for Public Works is, will this be installed by the time we do the, the opening?
I don't know.
Okay, we should probably wait until these are installed before we actually have.
That would, that would be nice, but I, I don't know, I'm going to check with, I will check with them tomorrow to find out how long it'll take.
Okay.
To, to get them fabricated.
Okay, I know we already set a date, but.
Yeah.
I'd just, it'd be nice if we had everything that was, you know, intended for that site, or most things, I don't know, we, we don't need necessarily the environmental art.
Right.
Immediately.
Yeah, the environmental art will not happen until October or later in October.
Okay.
So that's just, it's just too hot right now.
All right, thank you. All right, so council, we're going to move on to presentation items for discussion and possible action. The only item we have there is the variance request. Before we start the process for the variance, let's, I'd like to ask for a motion to move into executive session. Counselor, member Medicas.
Motion to move into executive session.
And if you could, pursuant to five five one dot oh seven one, to consult a city attorney, please.
Pursuant to, where am I? Oh, five five one oh seven one, no, five five one oh seven two, no, oh seven one. I need glasses to see that.
So they, so this will be a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven one for consultation with the city attorney, if you agree with that.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Second for Mayor Porton. All right, all those in favor, moving into executive session.
Aye.
Move into executive session at six thirty-two for brief discussion, and as a reminder, we won't be taking any action while we're in executive session.
We're going to continue with agenda number eight, which is the presentation of possible action on appearance request under land development code section 150.323 to allow impervious cover in excess of 14% and development within the water quality transition zone and 75-foot setback to the critical water quality zone for the construction of a single-family home at 41 Pillow Road. And so council, we're going to go ahead and follow the following this opening of this agenda item, we're going to go to staff presentations, we'll give the applicants a chance to make a presentation. We'll have public comments, both in favor and opposed. The applicants will have a chance to rebut any public comments. City council will then have a chance to ask questions and then there'll be a possible motion and if there's a motion, a vote. So with that, I'm going to hand it over for staff presentation, beginning with the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. So 41 Pillow Road is a legally platted residential lot. It is located entirely within the water quality transition zone and partially within both the critical water quality zone and 75-foot setback to the critical water quality zone. The lot does not contain any uplands zone. Also, a portion of the property lies within the FEMA 100-year floodplain and floodway towards the rear of the property, along with the FEMA 500-year floodplain. The proposed residence is located in the 500-year floodplain and the finished floor elevation is two, uh, finished floor elevation is two feet higher. So just for reference, bring up the map. So this is the forerunner map. I can make it bigger. So the, this yellow area here, this is where the proposed residence will be. This is the 500-year floodplain. This is the 100-year floodplain and floodway in the back with the dash lines being the floodway. And let me turn on another layer here. So turn, so this is, so again, the property's